Welcome to the City of San Juan work session agenda today for July 12th, 2016 at 5:09. Let us rise for an invocation. And Commissioner Garcia, can you lead us in invocation?
Lord Jesus Christ, thank you for bringing us here today. Lord, bless us as we make the best decisions for our community, Lord. Also bless the Dallas community, which they lost some law enforcement officers. Right now, they're going through a bad times. Can you please bless their families, all the loved ones, and the community of Dallas as well? In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. We can face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we may be seated. In our agenda for work session, we're going to be discussing the presentation on the City of San Juan Street improvements and financial options. Mr. Arjona.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, tonight we have Mr. Garcia here with us and Mr. Vela. Mr. Garcia, obviously, he's going to give us a, he's with the, he's an engineer with the ACE Company. He did an assessment on the streets here at the city of San Juan, and he's going to be presenting to us some numbers on the conditions of the streets, which he labeled the streets that failed, the streets that are in serious condition, very poor condition, in poor condition, and also the ones that are in fair condition. So if I can have Mr. Garcia come to the podium and discuss or explain the numbers, how you came about those numbers.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. As Mr. Arjona indicated, we utilize as the basis the study that we mentioned at the last council meeting that I was here at, in regards to the study that was done by UTRGV and the assessment that they did on inventory of the streets, really. Well, we went through and we looked at some of the key points on the streets and looking at when we first met with staff, we identified a primary target area, which is the highest density areas of the city, which is Business 83, south to Moore, from Veterans to Stewart Road. So we've got that big square area there. In my report that you have there in front of you, you have a little bit of a summary of what they use, and I mentioned last time I was here about the PCI, you know, the pavement condition index, and how they used to identify, how they arrived at the conditions of calling a street failed, very poor, poor, fair condition, and serious condition as well. And so there's approximately about 510 streets that were inventoried, okay?
Oh, what?
So 510 streets. So if you bear with me, this is why it's taken us this long to decipher through all this data and going through all these streets into identifying the conditions. In a nutshell, on the second page, you know, there's two of those bullet items I have. And by the way, if anybody in the commission, in the audience, if they don't understand in English, then you need to speak in Spanish or translate back and forth, I'll be more than happy to. Si alguien en la audiencia que no entiende inglés, si necesitan que se haga ciertos comentarios en español, con todo gusto se lo hago también, nada más con que me avisen, okay? So we have two streets. Hubo dos calles que fallaron completamente. Twelve streets were in serious condition, okay? And we'll get to it on the Excel spreadsheets that we have on it. Five of those streets are within what I'm going to call the quadrant, okay? I'm going to keep on referring to the quadrant as the area that we, those areas of boundaries that we talked about. So we had 12 streets in very serious condition. Dos se calles con condiciones seria, cinco de ellas están en el área del Business 83, a la Moore, de la Stewart, a la Veterans.
Do you have a visual?
I, did you have the presentation on the? I have the map here. It's just, it's a huge map, that's why.
Can we put something up so we can take a look at, because when you talk boundaries, you kind of forget. I like to be able to glance up and let the folks see what you're making reference to. Monica, that would be great, okay?
En el área de las calles que estuvimos viendo primordiales de toda la ciudad, pero también en el área donde hay la mayor densidad de gente que vive, que es el área del 83 Business, a la Moore, de la Stewart, a la Veterans, ¿verdad? Es área también. Entonces ahorita los números primiciales que hicimos en los cálculos fueron esas, esas calles, claro. Son 510 calles que hay más o menos en la ciudad, entonces digo, por eso es de que nos hemos tardado tiempo para dar todos estos números.
We have 42 streets in poor condition, 17 of them were in that quadrant area. 90 are in fair condition, okay? And 32 of them are within that boundary. So a total of 88 streets need attention in the immediate near future.
That would be from the first four bullets, correct?
Yes, ma'am. 28, and I say streets, there are segments of streets, okay? Are, fall within that boundary area. There's 14 streets that are, don't have curb and gutter. One of them failed, four of them are in poor, very poor condition, and nine of them are in poor condition. Some of those of high priority, and I got the list. It's Star Ruby Road, Jonathan Road, San Antonio Avenue from 7th to San Houston, Nebraska from 12th to Ridge, Ohio, Andrew Street, Doe Street, and Coal Drive, and West 13th Street, and the Clark Terrace area. So on the next page, we go in and we look at, and if you, if you, too, I have everything on a flash drive, you wanted to, and put it up, or you have it there. So if you go to the next page, there we go. Okay, so we have the failed, let me see if this shows up there, yes. Okay, so with the failed streets, the little asterisk basically is streets without curb and gutter, okay? So in the, I was trying to, how we keep informing you, so any streets on the, on the report that you see that have an asterisk indicates a street that is lacking curb and gutter to it, okay?
Is it the condition of the lack of curb and gutter, or the surface also?
The...
Yes, that particular...
Well, in this particular case, it's a street that failed...
Right.
And doesn't have curb and gutter.
Okay.
So in this particular case of East San Diego Street, it's both. On Hooper Street, it's a street that failed, but that street has curb and gutter. So it's the pavement that's failed, not the curb and gutter.
I got you.
There might be a section of asphalt, or, I mean, a section of curb and gutter where a car might have hit in it, or, you know, there's been failures or breakage on the concrete that will need to be patched, but, yeah. And so we have the from to, so the starting point to the ending point, so this gives us the length, the approximate width of what we can find on records right now without going and actually field surveying every single street. So we got 20 feet wide, so we got a 250 length by 20 feet wide, gives us that square footage, gives us this square yards, and based on the numbers that were projected on the report, and I would like to mention that the city of Mission has a similar project out for bids right now, which are due on Thursday, Mayor. What I would like to do is once, on Thursday, the city will open its bids, we will get a very good idea from the numbers of what contractors are bidding on this, to get a better good grasp of what the exact cost of this will be for us, okay? So on this particular street, which is 555 square yards, at a cost, anticipated cost of $75 a square yard, you're looking at, I'm going to round up, $42,000 for that street.
With curb and gutter?
This street is without curb and gutter. So if we add the curb and gutter, you're going to add, you know, $10 a linear foot for 500 linear feet, you're adding another $5,000 to it, in part of it with, to add the curb and gutter to it, okay? On Hooper Street has curb and gutter, so that's not going to be an issue, but it's a longer stretch, a wider street, and so that ends up being a $300,000 expense.
Now, do you have any information as far as whether those streets flood?
Not yet. So, because again, this was an inventory that did it on the conditions of the streets, not a topography. The only way we would get and find out exactly on Hooper, is that how you say it, Hooper? I'd hate to butcher up the name of the, of the street. I won't know if he has a belly to it, if it's got a sag on it, you know, if one side is slanted, until we go and do actual survey of it. So what we need to do is, at one point is, if you tell me, okay, Carlos, these two trees, two streets have failed, definitely with these two streets, we want to do them, then we can schedule to go and do field work of survey to find out if drainage, you know, and ponding is an issue for that street. Because if the street is ponding, that's the number one culprit for failures of your asphalt, okay?
Do you have the old assessments?
We do.
Can I have that, please?
I don't, I didn't bring them with me, but we do have, we have the capital improvements one from 2015, then we have the UTRGV as well.
Because we've already approved the urban county money for...
For Hooper.
Hooper, Pullen, Sasa.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And that's what Javier indicated to me today. So what he's going to be doing is providing me a list of what you have through urban county and streets that you've already occurred, the, I know, like, for example, San Antonio Street is a street that you recently paved and all that, so we can update this sheet to...
Right, so we're not talking about it anymore?
To reflect that at this time, yes. So that way, yes. So that if you've already accounted the money necessary for Hooper, then we can bring it out of the table and saying, okay, Hooper's already been addressed, okay? And we can make another column over here and says, you know, anticipated construction date or something like that, to give us an idea on when Hooper then is going to be, so that then we can go back to the public and tell them, hey, Hooper will be done within six months, okay?
Right.
And that way, if you're getting a phone call of a resident and saying, hey, this is when that street is coming.
It's just that, if we look at, this is what just doesn't jive, you're, the disparity between what you're stating that Hooper would cost us of $300,000 versus what has been estimated of $71,000.
Correct.
It's a huge disparity.
Now, let me, if I may approach, one of the things that, the disparity on the numbers is part of it, I'm going to try to talk a bit louder, maybe, if you can hear me, is in the UTRGV report, they gave it just a lump sum of $75 a square yard, saying, well, here, give and take on one, I'm going to need to adjust an inlet, another one, I'm going to adjust a manhole, but another one, I won't. And that's where I have a problem with those numbers. And I tried, I contacted three contractors to try to get some numbers from the contractors. Unfortunately, you know, contractors, because they're saying, hey, are you bidding a project or are you just getting numbers? And of course, you know, since we're just getting numbers, it's taking longer to get the data from them than it was saying, okay, we're putting out a project for bid in two weeks, and I'm working project numbers for budget purposes. And so one of the things that we need to look at is if this numbers that you have from the 2015 assessment that was done, if it was just an overlay or a complete redo. This is a complete redo. This is going back in. So this takes into account that you have a street that is existing. So not only is that new construction, okay? It's not only a new construction, but I have to demolish what is there right now. So it takes into account a new construction, I mean, if I have an old dilapidated home, I'm going to build a new home. If I have a lot next door and I'm just building a new home, obviously, it's going to be cheaper than tearing down the existing home and building an identical home on that lot. And so that's where I want to make sure that, and that's what I'm saying is, as of Thursday, when the city of Mission, and hope the city of Mission doesn't mind me using their numbers, I mean, they're going to be public information, then we will use that as a basis to then call it triangulate between this number, the number that you have there on, on that report, and the numbers that we're seeing in the, in public. I mean, you know, and everything fluctuates, unfortunately, we're talking asphalt, it's very much driven with the price of fuels and everything else, so the numbers from three years ago, two years ago, you know, are very different. And, and so that's where we get on that. So then, this is on the failed category. So Monica, if you flip to the next page, please, you'll see the serious. Now this one, the way I did it to help you visualize is, we have the entire streets that, that are in the serious condition. Everything that is highlighted in yellow are the streets that are in that quadrant area that we talked about. Business 83 to Moore.
Go ahead and point out the one, all of these, the ones that are not...
So this one...
In there, or are they on the map? And then where are these on the map? So we can take a look at that. Can you just point them out, which area you're talking about?
On, on this four, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, this five are... You have to get closer here, too. Hold on, it's because we have different maps.
Okay.
Mine, I have a big circle on mine, so...
Let's look at the one that you can identify.
Yes, that's why I was, I was, I looked lost. So we could, we could go from Business 83 to, oh, I have a big circle. We have this area. So we have Business 83 to, to Moore, Veterans, to Stewart. Okay? So we've got Business 83 right here, Stewart, Veterans, and then Moore down, down here, more right there. So everything that's in yellow is in this area right here, okay? Everything that is not highlighted yellow, it's somewhere else in the city.
Right, which means Dove and Bluebird were talking off of Retama, yes?
You got to bear with me on that one, Mayor. I don't know them all by, by locations of, of where they're at in relation to, in the, in the city.
It's on, on one...
But yes, so this is Dove Street from San Antonio to Lincoln.
San Antonio to Lincoln on the north side. That would be east of the, it would be west of Raúl Longoria then.
Yes, because San Antonio's been over here, yes. Bluebird is from San Antonio to Lincoln, same thing. So that tells me that Dove and Bluebird are parallel to each other, you know, in the same neighborhood area. Puerto Vallarta is from Sioux Road to Veracruz. Cancún from Sioux Road to Veracruz. So again, two streets are parallel to each other, probably in the same neighborhood area, okay? And again, that doesn't say that this street cannot be taken into the next step of deciding which streets we're going to do. It's just since we spoke about that quadrant area, we analyzed them. So if we went in and did all these streets, all these streets, given their lengths, their widths, at that cost of $75 a square yard, we come in with $3.2 million.
And just these streets?
And just these streets.
Wow.
Based on that price, Mayor, okay?
Just ludicrous.
Don't crucify me for that price, the price that they quoted on the study that you, that you received.
Well, it just kind of makes us stop the discussion.
No, yes, it is.
You know, so, that makes it difficult.
So it is extremely difficult. And this is, I wanted to do this so that the public can see that, I mean, we're talking some serious investment here. Of the yellow streets, what I did is this column, so everything that is yellow, and that's why I have this one in yellow, gives you an idea, those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 streets are one point, I'm going to round up, 1.3 million dollars.
Las calles, las calles, todo lo que está marcado aquí en amarillo son calles que están incluidas en esa área del, del 83 Business, a la Moore, de la Stewart, a la Veterans. Las calles que están en blanco son calles que están en otras partes de la ciudad, ¿verdad? Para enfocarnos entonces poder decidir qué calles son las que vamos a tomar en cuenta primero, pero para que vean, si, si todas estas calles que están aquí en esta lista, basados con nuestras estimaciones que hicieron en el estudio que presentó la universidad a la ciudad, estamos hablando de 3.3 millones de dólares. Entonces, para que me entiendan cuando decimos estamos trabajando en eso, pero no son cacahuetes. 3.3 millones de dólares. Si reemplazamos las calles que están en esa área del 83 Business, a la Moore, de la Veterans, a la Stewart, estamos hablando 1.3 millones de dólares. Como quiera. O sea, son cinco, una, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco calles. Son cinco calles. 1.3 millones de dólares, ¿verdad? Entonces, y estas son las que están en, en la categoría de serie, seria la, la condición de la calle, quiere decir que hay que reemplazarlas. Empiezan con las que fallaron, failed, serious, very poor, las muy pobres, las pobres, las que están más o menos, y las que pasaron ya satisfactorias, y las buenas, ¿verdad? Entonces, a lo que le digo es de que, por favor, tenganos paciencia en hacer todo el aspecto de ver todos esto, porque como les dije, estamos hablando de 510 calles. Tengo tres meses en que empezamos este proceso con la ciudad, o sea, de, de, empezamos a trabajar con la ciudad, y tenemos poco tiempo en que empezamos trabajando con todo este análisis de todo este estudio que se hizo.
The next category, and it gets a little bit better, is we go up higher, okay? As we go up higher in the categories, como vamos subiendo de categoría, van a ver que las amarillas no son tan grandes en unas ciertas categorías, por ejemplo aquí, las que están, que les llaman muy pobres, o sea, en cierta manera, las calles están de buenas, más de mejor condición. Todas las, aquí no hay nada amarillo. There's nothing here because they're in very poor, but, but that means they're not in that quadrant, okay? They're somewhere else in the, in the city, okay?
Maybe that's where I'm a little confused, Mr. Garcia. When you show your results based on the study, it's only, is it, when you come up with this part that says serious, okay? That is after you looked at the entire group of 510?
That is the entire city. Everything, everything here is, we analyzed the entire city.
Okay, so when you, when you, the entire city, you came up with the, the previous list as the only ones that fell under serious. Other than that, everything was...
Correct, correct.
All over the entire city.
There's two, in toda la ciudad, in the city, there was two failed. Dos fallaron completamente. Two of them, in the entire city. There's, that's why I have it on that, on the first page, on the summary. There was 13 or so that were under the serious in the entire city. The yellow ones are in that quadrant area.
Right.
Okay? But we did analyze the entire city.
Okay, so if we go, let me, let's go back to that...
Okay.
Chart that has yellow and white.
Okay.
Monica, can you go back to that one?
There.
Right. Would you, would it be fair to say that more streets actually fit in here? But you stopped at the yellow quadrant because you concentrated there.
Well, we checked the entire city.
But there'd be some outside this quadrant that fall under serious, or no?
Yes, this...
Besides those?
No.
Okay, so everything's in...
This is the entire city. This represents, are the...
From the whole city?
From the whole city that are in serious condition.
Okay.
What is white is outside the quadrant. What is yellow is inside the quadrant. So that way, I did it to give you, okay, this is your entire city, this, okay? But then this is the quadrant only.
Right, which is the one you...
So if we're going to, if we're going to repair the city's streets in the entire city under a serious category, we're looking at 3.3, 3.2 million.
Okay.
Under the quadrant, you're looking at 1.3 million.
Right.
Okay, and that's how I did it, too. So we did the whole scheme, yes, it wouldn't be fair for the rest of the public...
Exactly.
If we only focus on that quadrant, no. So we did analyze your entire city, Mayor.
So, Mr. Garcia, those amounts, basically, it's a whole reconstruction of the street?
Yes, sir.
I mean, total reconstruction of the street?
Yes.
None of this overlay or...
No particitos, no, 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 no. No, this is, we're ripping out, reworking the caliche, testing the caliche, compacting the caliche, if caliche, you know, because of the weathering effect, or if it was just bad caliche that got put on there, you know, or it doesn't meet today's standards, then it's hauling that off, putting new material in. And that's why I was saying that, that the price, then, that's why it gets a little bit more elevated, because we're hauling up that, you know, waste material. In some instances, we, if drainage is an issue, then what we can do is we can mill the entire street, work the asphalt into the caliche, and use that as a base, as long as the material is good, and then we come back with more caliche on top and a new hot mix, okay? But the problem is going to be that if we get to the point of full reconstruction in the street that has curb and gutter and ponding is an issue, we might get to the point that we have to adjust curbs elevations. But if we're adjusting curbs, then we're affecting people's driveways also entering into the street. So it grows a little bit in scope, because then that driveway, if I raise that street six inches, well, then we're going to have to rip this driveway to raise it to meet, meet up with the street, okay?
And I know that the difference probably from the time that it was evaluated back in 2015 to now is the completion of Sioux Road, which definitely probably got elevated with, when it was redone.
Correct.
Those dynamics change.
And for example, San Antonio Street, you did overlay, there was a section of San Antonio that was a new street, and there was a section that was overlay. So that, again, in these numbers, I think San Antonio falls in the, in, in one of, it was on the very poor category in another section, yes. So on the next page, Monica, if you flipped, it would be two more pages, the next one over? Okay, so there's San Antonio right there, you know, from San Houston to 7th, okay? But you already did San Antonio in that section. So then we'll be able to scratch it off of this, so when you go to, you know, it's, it's one more page there, Monica, you will see the amount, then we'll be able to subtract from this amount that street, because you've already taken care of it by in kind, or by previous investment, or you have it through development, you know, block grant program. So we have the, I kind of skimmed through this ones, but this is the very poor condition, so this is the one where we stopped looking on the cost. So we went from the very poor, the very poor, the serious, and the failed, which are the immediate attention necessary. So again, there's going to be scattered some areas, so I got yellow just to show you, and that's why here, when I go to that last column on the yellow, it's in the quadrant, but we analyzed the entire street. You notice, go back two, two pages on that, Monica, it would be the beginning of the very poor condition. So see, on very poor here, there's a, there's a good number of streets, they're not in the, in that section of town that we were talking about, they're somewhere else in the city, okay? So for example, if, if we focus, I'm going to pick no particular street, I mean, I'm going to look up here. So if we look at Evanon, from Raúl Longoria to Cedro, okay, it's 1,450 linear feet, 30 feet wide, you know, at that cost, you know, and, and this is going to take into, in some areas, you have subdivisions where the sanitary sewer crossings and the water crossings create the little divots on, on the streets. So this is addressing, coming back in and compacting that and putting it. Now, again, don't hang me out or quote me exactly on the, that if we were to bid this tomorrow, it's going to come in at that price, but that is the price of, that was quoted on the report that was done by the university, okay?
Do you have experience in getting streets out and...
Yes, ma'am.
And when you looked at the quote that was being given by the university, based on your experience, what did you think?
A little high, in my opinion. Now, not having full design plans, I mean, if I'm going to come in on this, I'm going to look at, you know, because we have a street, we have the pavement, what people don't realize is that the, the asphalt is this area, but then we have our curb and gutter, all right? So that curb, whether it's 18 inch or 24 inch, but then outside the curb, we go back two feet and two feet on the caliche, so the base of caliche is bigger. So then when we normally, if I was going to be, if I was doing a subdivision, you know, and I'm doing this for a brand new subdivision, how we bid it out, we put out, you know, the grubbing of the soil, the scarifying of the material, putting lime stabilization on the subgrade, on the, on the natural material, we're, so we run geotech and determine what the lime contents is going to be for that, then we will put in the caliche, and of course, all this will get tested, as we go in and lifts of the caliche, then we come in and put the concrete of the, of the curb, then we come back in and put the street on it. So it's, you know, a multi-layered cake of putting one thing on top of the other, and making sure then that we have the proper curvature on the street, so we have that crown on the street, so the drainage is there. So that the runs, and then looking at the placement of inlets, you might have a street that was done, you know, if, if it's 1,400 feet, and they only put one pair of inlets, and it's all the way to the end, and the street has cracked and buckled, and the curb has been, has fallen back because they didn't put enough caliche, then as that water's coming along the curb and gutter, you're continuously getting water infiltrating into the road. Well, but it gets on that edge, which is where the tires, the passenger tires are edge, which is where the tires, the passenger tires on, on the vehicle's drive, and you're gonna end up with a lot more potholes along that covering gutter, and so that's when you start developing those potholes there on, on the covering gutter, and you have more moisture along the curb, that's where that curb has tendency to lean, lean back onto itself, tilt backwards. I mean, it's, I could talk for hours on, 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 on this topic, so I mean, if y'all have any, any questions, you know, through, through it, please let me know if anybody in the public has any, any questions, so I'm not saying that, you know, we're discrediting any of these streets, it's not being necessary for improvements, at this point, we need to start deciding by these findings, what streets, and, so we have the very poor condition, so we need to decide of this list that we came up with, of very poor-conditioned streets, which street do we wanna focus on doing first? So we know that the failed street, we absolutely have to do, the serious streets, well, you know, they're a higher priority than very poor, okay? We get to the very poor, if we have a very poor street that's in front of a school that gets a lot of traffic, then we should consider that one first. Yes, some citizens might get offended at the fact that we're gonna put that one first and not their street, but we have to give it a priority somehow, and that's where I need your help, in helping me decide, saying, I don't wanna be the one saying, okay, mi ni mi ni, mi ni mo, I'm gonna do Garfield Street. I mean, I, I
I think our help's gonna come from Mr. Vela.
You know, so, so that's where I need, I need, not only you, I'm saying the community's
Right, and I guess what makes it a little challenging here is that you're not certain on these numbers as well, on the, on
Well, we can, we can come back in and, and refine, and trying to look and, and getting more exact numbers on, on the price.
We would need to have that, because looking at, I think what you, what you're establishing here, and you're saying that you're in concurrence with the findings, which definitely is different than the findings that we've seen before, they have changed, and that is that you're saying that the, the classification of failed, and serious, and very poor, you're in agreement that the way that they've been classified here, that they should
In the methodology, yes, the methodology that was used to arriving at this set of data, I agree with it, okay?
Okay.
Disagreements, we have two reports, and granted, we're not gonna know until we put out bids, so in regards to the numbers on contractors, okay, we won't know until we actually bid a street, I mean, we might have a street today, that we bid today, and we bid another section of street with the same dimensions, three months from now, and we might get a price that's ten percent higher, or five percent lower, it, there's, a different contractor might be slow on work, and they need something to keep people on payroll, so they're gonna give you a little bit better price, just because they need the work, you know?
Price of material goes up, you know, just like anything else.
Price of oil jumps up tomorrow, and the hot, it's more expensive, the tar, the raw materials, where the asphalt gets more expensive, the concrete gets more expensive, the rebar, you know?
So, if we look at, let's talk a little bit about the list that are, you, you've agreed are classified as poor, what exactly timeframe are you looking at those, as far as holding out in the condition that they are before they get bumped into the upper?
I'm gonna use the analogy, that it's kinda like buying a brand-new vehicle at a dealership, how long before you need, other than oil change and, and air filter, fuel filter, and tires on the car, you might go four, five years before you have serious mechanical failure, you know, yes, at twenty-five thousand miles, you know, thirty thousand miles, you might need new tires, at sixty, you might need new brakes, same thing with the streets. So we might have a street that's in poor condition, that we need to assess also, they, they gave it as a whole ranking, you might have a, a great number of potholes on it, but that potholes might be on the west half of that street only, you know, if it's, you know, running east and west, it might be on the west half of that street only that has the serious of potholes because of ponding, okay? So then, we need to make an assessment, saying, okay, that section of street, that even though it's in poor condition, we're gonna saw cut it, we're gonna repair it, but we're gonna bring the elevations to where they need to be and get the drainage correct, and so then the east half might last you another five years, or ten years, okay? And, and really, that's where we need to, once we start implementing the changes on the streets, we really need to get into a GIS-type-based system, where it's a database, and we can talk with your IT department and, and working together on that, to creating an inventory of that street, and so we know, okay, Street A, from B to Z, got replaced in 2016, you know, so we know, kind of a outlook reminder, we don't need to remind ourselves too much about it, but, you know, every, every so often, we need to drive it and make sure that no cracks have developed in it, because you might have a brand-new street that still develops a crack for, you know, soil movements, there's, there's a million different reasons that, that street might end up developing some issues with it. Somebody was remodeling a house, they brought a roll-off container, they unrolled it on the, rolled it on the street, you know, they brought eighteen-wheelers full of dirt under wet conditions, they knocked the curb back because they were building a lot, you know, in a, in a lot, so, obviously, that's a, that's a user-driven failure of the street, that we need to, at the same time, keep monitoring on those. So on the poor, you know, it, what we don't want is a street that is in the poor condition to get to a very poor condition, that's what we wanna, we wanna do that maintenance aspect to it, to not get it below poor.
What do you know about the team that gets used to, I don't remember what it's called anymore, but the one that McAllen uses, and I know it goes
It's a single pass, single pass resurfacing?
Yeah, it just comes in the, in the summertime, and does the, or in the wintertime, does the, using the same materials, add whatever's not there, and replenishes, I mean, how does that work, and have you had any experience with that, and looking at that?
I mean, I've seen applications of it, I haven't talked to staff in the city level of what they're taking us on it, but I know they've used it for quite a few years, so they might be getting, they must be getting good results of it, or they wouldn't be using it, you know?
Right, so, so that, would that be something, because they, what they do is they bring in their, their crews, their machines, and they're able to use what's there, and just put in what is needed.
Correct, but remember, ma'am.
That'd be something to assess as well, to be able to look at some of the roads that are not in the very serious, that have to be completely rebuilt, but those that might not be, that might benefit from that happening.
Right.
I'd like for you to take a look at that, and find out what kind of, what would qualify, if any, and what would the cost of that be?
One of the things, one of the things I've known personally, I mean, and I've seen them, Dove Street recently, Dove and Tenth, and right there, Lowe's intersection, I recently remember being, my, my kids go to the swimming class right there in the area, and, and so I remember seeing that recently, I remember seeing, they went on Business Eighty-Three, around Main, and, and going west towards Bicentennial, in that area too, so, because it's a big machine, you have to be big roads, I mean, we can't get them into a, into a little bitty twenty-foot road on there, because it, it does obstruct traffic, so you gotta have traffic control and that kinda stuff, so on the larger streets, you know, the street where it has two lanes, so they can do a partial lane closure, have one lane to travel, and so forth, but I will research that more for you, you know, and, and seeing what are they're getting, and I can talk, and, you know, through open records and everything else, look at what those bids, last time they bid one, and what the bids are coming in at, so we can assess that. Now, that's a single pass, not touching curb and gutter, I mean, it doesn't touch the, the curb, so, again, if we have a street that has a failure on a curb, that, that machine is not the solution for
I understand, I wasn't talking about
And so, yeah.
So, let's go back to what you have here, numbers, if you put together then, between the failed, and the serious, and the very poor, which is what you would think that we would need to be concentrating on?
Between the fair, the poor, no, I wouldn't be touching the fair right now.
No, no, I'm not saying fair, I said very poor, I never went to fair. I said failed?
Failed, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes, sir, serious, and very poor.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you look at the, of course, the very poor is a very long list.
Mm-hmm.
And in that list, you still believe that there's some that need to be addressed, even in this time that we're looking at a funding period?
Yes.
Okay, so, in saying that, what do you, in this long list, what do you expect in this, for purposes of taking care in year one, year two, and year three, based on condition? Is that something you're gonna come back and take a look at?
Well, we're gonna
Because my understanding is, failed and serious need to be addressed now.
Yes, that is correct.
So that, we have to figure out funding for that.
Correct.
Then we hit the very poor, and
We have the very poor, and going back to, let me go to here real quick. On the very poor, we have thirty-two streets in the city.
Okay. Can you identify where the, the bulk of those are, sir? Did you do that as a quadrant, or just overall?
We have a list of them, we don't have, we don't have a map of, yes, so the very poor, it starts
And those have no curb and gutter, Forty First, Board, or Sunset?
Okay, so Forty First doesn't have curb and gutter, neither does Border Breeze, and neither does Sunset, but all these streets, there's, there's two and a half pages of them, on, on the report that we have here, so there's one page, two page, two pages, and three, and three more.
So would you say, can you go back? That those first top three could probably even go up to the next?
Yes, considering that they don't have curb and gutter, and they're inside the city? You know what, let's, let's bring them up to at least to city standards, and put a covering gutter on them, and bring them up, so yes, we could look at these three streets, okay, and try to bring them into the next category, not because they're, not because of the, they're in serious condition, but just because trying to bring them up to, to code, you know, of the city.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yes, but assuming that the numbers are correct, mayor, you know, there's half a mil, and there's another hundred right there, so there goes six hundred thousand dollars, assuming, assuming that price. So question being is, where do we get six hundred thousand dollars to do it?
Well, that's gonna be the question for the whole thing.
Yes.
Right.
So, so that's why, what I'm saying is, so, given that the pot is not endless, you know, if, if we, if we're to the max, but we can fund right now, and we wanna bring this ones in that category, you know, there might be another one in that other category that doesn't get fooled the entire length of the street, so like here, we have eleven hundred feet, well, that's not to say that you come in and do five hundred feet on, on it, do half the street, and then come back on the next go-round and do the other half of the street, if, if, or whatever the Only would make sense if you had other streets that you knew you were gonna be working in the immediate vicinity area, because of the mobilization of equipment, yes, I agree with you, it wouldn't make sense to just do five hundred feet, you know, just send them for, for doing that job in that particular section there, okay?
So, if, what's the, the serious, with the failed, and the serious, and the very poor, the total on those, because you, you believe that those very poor can quickly switch?
Well, on the, on the
It's eight point eight million on the very poor, you're looking at three point two million on the seri, serious, and the failed, you're looking at three hundred and forty-one thousand.
So it's three point six?
About twelve million.
Yes. Three point six, and, yes.
About twelve million dollars.
It's a major, major undertaking. I, you know, it's, it's amazing, the numbers.
Need to look at those numbers.
Yes, I mean, when you look at those numbers, truly, they are amazing.
Right.
To consider that, you look at a city of your size, and people say, well, it's not that big of the surface area of a city, and you look at the amount of, that's not counting water, sewer, because right now, we're talking pavement, but remember, you know, we're not even going back and looking, okay, is the sanitary sewer under that pavement clay pipe? Well, why are we gonna put asphalt, brand-new street, on top of a thirty-year-old clay pipe underground, you know? Do we wanna go that route? Do we wanna look at some of that other infrastructure, and if I do, then, you know, Mr. Salinas and I are gonna be spending a lot of time looking at water and sewer lines, you know, and, and that stuff, but it would make sense to, if we have a street that we know, okay, the street is an old, old street, there's clay pipe in the area, and they have records of continuous failures, and having to come in and do repairs, then before we go do this expense on it, you know, let's, let's fix what's buried underground too, and, but, again, if that sewer line costs three hundred thousand dollars, well, there, there goes that money for that street, you know? And, but it's something that we need to decide if we wanna even go further and look in at the data, to try to decipher some of that information or not, because I would hate to put a, I mean, there, there's many streets where the sanitary sewer's in the middle of the street, and then we know that there's substantial failures, I would feel really bad if we go and put in brand-new street, brand-new caliche, brand-new everything, and two years from now, you have to come in and rip it out. Okay, and I certainly don't wanna be the one coming, you're asking me, in two years from now, you know, why did you tell us to do this street two years ago, and we didn't look into these other factors? And so, it, it is a lot of data, a lot of cross-referencing of infrastructure that unfortunately is buried infrastructure. So it's a perpetual problem that we face as engineers, as I say, I don't have X-ray vision, we can't look under, you know, underground, but, but yes, so
So then, what we would need to wait from you is, or at least your estimation of what this cost is, so we can take a look at it in a more concise way, because right now, we don't know if it's too elevated, and there's more things that we can do, or it's under?
Right, I mean, you know, if, if we're under, if we're over by twenty percent, and it's twelve million, we're over by, you know, two point four, I'm saying, and if it's under,
to undertake.
Yes.
So, and you said it would take you how long?
Well, again, we gotta look at
It's taking too long, that's just the thing. So, when is that coming in, that you said with Mission, or?
For
Even if it's not Mission, I mean, there's
Well, Mission is on Thursday, Mission, they're opening their bids Thursday, okay, so if we're gonna look at the numbers and try to utilize some of those numbers from the city of Mission, you know, we can look at, on, on, on Thursday when they
Well, I mean, the same kinda work that's here, not just a resurfacing versus a, you know, rehabilitation, reconstruction, that's, that's the thing.
And then, the other one is just researching it with contractors in, in the whole area, and, and trying to research more on it, I mean, and, and usually, when we're doing a subdivision, you know, we, we bid it out to three, four different contractors on a, on a street project, or something like that, and so we get those three, four, I mean, recently, you know, we, I, I just did a subdivision in, in McAllen, and I have numbers for the streets on that, you know, but it's, it's a small street, I mean, obviously, economy of scale, the larger, the larger the project, the better prices you're gonna get from the contractors also, so even to come back in and saying, you know what, a cost of sixty dollars, well, if you're doing one million dollars, maybe sixty dollars is the price, but if you're doing ten million dollars, maybe fifty-two dollars is the price that you get, you know, on that, because of the economy of scale, the contractors are gonna be more, more interested, and also, you gotta look at their bonding capabilities and everything else on the projects, so look at what can they carry on that kinda bonding.
Very good.
Okay, what I will, what I will do is, I will keep, Mr. Arjona Preston, on the information as I'm gathering it, and that way, he'll relay that information to you, mayor, and we will schedule another, another workshop, if you'd like, to keep you informed of where, where I'm at with the, with the information.
But I'd like to go ahead and, I do wanna have him speak to us, because we have you scheduled in this part of, I might have to open the other meeting, recess, open, and then shut again, and finish up the, the workshop, but I'd like for him to, to come out and talk to us a little bit about the financing, and then make available to our folks who came in to see on the streets, maybe this book, so y'all can take a look at it, I know there's several of you that have been very interested, and have been asking, that maybe, Mr. Garza, you can show that to them, I want you to hear the financing, though.
If anyone of you guys wants to see the report, and it's in English, if anyone wants to help us explain, to explain a little bit the methodology of what we're using to do this, with all the gusto. Mr. Arjona has my telephone and everything, and I'm still here in the joint. So if anyone has any questions, with all the gusto, please, just say it.
If I have any questions, if we're in the future, how much would we lose? Because those streets that we're in, they've already been flooded, and they're flooded. And as always, there's people in their third age, and I'm the senior, and I'm the senior. 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 There's been a lot of flooding, and I've been there. There's been a lot of flooding. There's been a lot of flooding, and the roads are flooded. I have three vehicles, one of them is a two-wheeler, that's a two-wheeler. I have a four-wheeler, and I have a five-wheeler. They're both the same size, and they're both flooded.
No, I know, I know, I know. I wanted to talk to you a little bit, I need to let Mr. Vela speak, because I'm running out of time, we only have one hour.
I'll give you my information, and then we'll talk to you, and then we'll respond to it. Not that we don't want to answer, but it's not easy for me, and the other senior can't talk to you.
I'm the senior, and I'm the senior. And here, with all the courtesy, I'm the senior.
Yeah, and I want to go ahead, Mr. Vela, if you can come up forward really quickly, and I'm gonna go ahead and let you begin, and then I'm gonna have to recess for a little bit, so open the other meeting, and then we'll recess as well.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, I think that we can be brief, and we can summarize what we have in the presentation. The presentation is a document that you have already seen. It's a document that the objectives have not changed, they are the same. The only thing that we did was refresh the numbers to reflect current interest rate environment and market conditions. I will take you, if the young lady-
Let me just go ahead and, let me recess and close the workshop for a little bit, recess it, so I can open up the commission meeting, I'm gonna recess that, because I see that we're already into the timeframe. If I may, Mr. Vela.
Certainly.
I'd like to go ahead and recess the workshop agenda at six oh two. And I'm going to go ahead and call in to order the meeting for a regular scheduled meeting for the city of San Juan, for today, July twelfth, twenty sixteen, at six oh two. We're going to dispense with the formalities that we have already done. We do have public comments, I will go ahead and close, at this point, recess this meeting, and we will open, and it'll be open for public comments, once the workshop has been completed. So, I'd like to go ahead and recess the commission meeting at six oh two, and open, go back into the work session, and open up the work session, back on the agenda for the work session at six oh two, and I'm gonna let Mr. Vela continue.
Very well, Mayor, members of the City Commission, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, to summarize, this presentation was previously done back in May. And we have, like I said, refreshed the numbers to reflect current market. The good news for the city of San Juan is that interest rates have gone in your direction. The only other variable that has been updated, that is a little lower by about twelve million dollars, is the estimate on the assessed valuation. And of course, you'll be getting those final numbers by the end of this month, hopefully by July, you get the certified value from the appraisal district, and we will have former numbers. But I do want to focus on slide two, please, and go over the executive summary very quickly of the financing, kind of remind the commission what we were talking about. And of course, the city has the opportunity to refund seven million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Remember, Mayor and members of the City Commission, that we were going to be doing this on a bank-qualified or less than ten million. We're talking about the combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, the O-sevens, and the waterworks and sewer system, series O-one, O-two, and O-six. Of course, the city can issue tax-exempt general obligation refunding bonds without the need for a debt service reserve fund. The waterworks and the sewer system, junior lien and debt service reserve fund, will be contributed to the refunding to reduce the amount of the refunding bonds. So whatever's in that pot, Mayor, will be used to offset the amount that we borrow. So that makes the water and sewer refunding go further, because you borrow less money. The refunding of the city's combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, O-seven, would be advanced refunding for IRS purposes, since the refunding escrow would be funded more than ninety days from the two fifteen seventeen call date. The refunding bonds can be issued as bank-qualified as I spoke. Now, I'd like to go, move on to slide number four. When I was here last, the lower blue box on the left-hand side, the current number was a three thirty-two. So we're at a three eighteen. From a market perspective, if I could summarize it verbally, we're in an all-time low. If there was ever a time to do this, now is the time to do it. Okay, from an interest rate standpoint. Obviously, affordability and all of the other matters, in terms of issuing, you know, reasonable and affordable debt goes into play. I'm gonna take you to the summary statistics on slide number seven, please. And I'm gonna go on the EDC support, you recall that we had that broken down for you, so that you could see the benefit of the transfer, or less amount of the transfer. But if you look at the gross savings, when we first presented the last time, that was at a hundred and ninety-seven, it goes to two forty-seven. On the INS-supported debt, it goes from four hundred and thirty-two to five hundred and twenty-eight. On the water and sewer, it goes from three fifty-two to three seventy-two. The average annual savings on the EDC was originally at a little under twenty thousand, it goes up to twenty-five. So it's less, I mean, it's more. And then on the other one, from fifty-two to sixty-four, and from fifty-four to sixty-three, and the average went up from eighty-six to one twelve. So the numbers look good as a result of, you know, the other slide, that interest rates are down. And there's a lot of reasons for the interest rates being where they're at. I think everyone tunes into the news and knows exactly what's going on, whether it be global, or whether it be local, or a combination of both. The next slide is the EDC slide, and remember, the last time that I was here, I asked you to focus on column M, because that is the amount that you would be saving on an annual basis, that otherwise would have to be paid. On the INS cash flows, you have the savings, again, on column M, that we spoke about. And then on the water and sewer, on column L. If you go to the next slide, that's the INS, and then go to the next slide, be the water and sewer. There's the savings on an annual basis that you would be realizing. On the new money capacity, there, because of the assessed valuation, we lost a little bit of play, even though interest rates are a little lower. But the good thing, Mayor, is that these assumptions, all these assumptions are at current interest rates, plus forty basis points. So we have almost half a point of cushion, you know, in terms of interest rate sensitivity. So interest rates could go up by forty basis, and we would still see this. If they don't go up, that means that we will have more savings than we presented to you.
Sure.
So on alternative number one, with no increase, we're looking at about a million two fifty. On alternative number two, we're looking at about a two million four four five. And alternative number three, with a two cent, would be four million one eighty-five. And again, with that cushion that I spoke about on the forty basis.
And this is, you said you already taken into account the valuations of the property, the current?
We took the first value, which was the original number, and we updated it with the second value, which is as of July the eleventh, but still listed in the preliminary category, so we're waiting for the certified value to finalize the estimates. And that's, in brief, Mayor, a summary of what we did the last time, and the efforts that we did to refresh the numbers for you.
Okay.
But the plan remains pretty much the same. Matter of fact, the same.
Are there questions from the commission, these amounts presented by Mr. Vela? So I just wanna recap it real quickly, from my understanding. We, if we were to refinance right now, we would come into one point two million, plus four hundred thousand, another amount from the water and sewer, correct? And how much would that be, again?
You talking in terms of gross savings?
Yes.
Okay, let's go back to slide-
I want to get the full amount for all of it, per-
Let's go to slide number seven. Okay, look at your gross, your gross savings on the EDC.
Yes.
It's two forty-seven. Your gross savings on the INS tax-supported debt is five twenty-eight.
And let me just stop you there, for the, when we say the savings, this would be to the EDC currently, correct? Their portion that they pay.
Correct, they would be paying that amount less.
Less, a year, so if they were paying, I don't know how much they pay a year, but-
A hundred and eighty?
Twenty-five thousand per year, right? It's not two hundred and forty-seven.
Well, whatever that number is, the, their portion-
Saving at the end of the year, two hundred and forty-seven, if they, we refinance that.
At the end of the maturity, on a per-year basis-
I got you, I'm sorry, sir, yes.
On a per-year basis, go to the next page, go to column M, and that would be your annual saving.
Overall, though, yes.
Be the two forty-seven, and the two forty-seven, yeah. So go back to slide number seven. And the INS tax-supported debt would be the same thing. The gross savings would be five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and if you go to slide number nine, you'd see the savings on an annual basis on column M. And that's how that would work. On the water and sewer side, the gross savings on number, page number ten, two, three seventy-two, and you see the, on column L, the annual savings on the water and sewer. And all of that, what that means, Mayor, on that, is just additional capacity to do other things.
Right.
Because it just lowers your debt, and remember that when we do the additional bonds test, it's existing debt plus additional to make the test. So if you lower your debt, it just gives you that much more capacity.
Okay, so, and just to summarize, with no increase, based on the valuations of the property now, of the value of the properties, we would be able to obtain one point two million without raising-
One point two million dollars, a little bit over, let's say one point three, you know, given the interest rate padding that we have.
Without raising taxes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then if we needed more, if we were to go up by one cent, then we would be able to generate two million, two point four million.
Let's say two point five, just to keep the numbers-
Two point five million. And if we went up by two cents, we'd be at four million.
Let's say, four point one.
Four point one million. Okay. So, if we were to look at what Mr. Garza was talking about, the poor and the, and the, what was the second one, serious? What was the total of the poor and the serious together? I mean, the failed and the-
The failed was three hundred and forty thousand. And the serious, the serious, Mayor?
So when you have, yeah, you said that those were-
It's three point two, three point, about three point six million?
Three point six million, for those that are failed or very serious. To be able to, that, and that's not even touching the-
That's not touching the very poor or poor.
Okay. So I guess that's, that's what we have to keep in mind, and that's what the public has to keep in mind. To be able to take care of the most serious streets, which have been identified, the city would need to come up with three point six at minimum. And currently, with what we are looking at, with evaluations and what we are able to obtain, where we are right now, we would only be able to get one point two million without taxes. And to get to that amount, it would, looking at even up to two cents, to, to one cent, to two cents, to be able to reach that. So the capacity which we have right now in generating new money is really, less than half to cover what's necessary. So that's one thing that we need to be very cognizant of, as we're looking at these projects and what the city can undertake. And then, as far as, when you make recommendations, Mr. Vela, as to amounts to finance, are there any restrictions as to how much could the city actually take on for the leverage? Being over-leveraged, or is this all what you're recommending, is this conservative enough that it doesn't jeopardize our rating and rates?
The rating is a, obviously, is a complex question, and a lot of things are taken into consideration. But obviously, one of the things that's important, and I wanna keep coming back to that, is that interest rates are at an all-time low.
Right.
One cent today goes a lot further than it, than it did a while back. So, to the extent that the amount of- To the extent that, that the increase in the, in the amount financed is, corresponds with the ability to repay-
Right.
Goes a long way. Now, the other thing, the last time that I was here, I also asked you all to review the rating report, and your performance on your budget, on your current budget, and your audited numbers is also very important, and it also takes into consideration. And there was some very specific language in that document that I asked you all to review. So I think that, that would be the best way to answer your question.
Any questions?
Vela, when we're talking two cents, we're talking two cents on every thousand, or what, two cents? A hundred?
Okay, let me, let me, let me do this here. Because that's a, that's an often calculated calculation, but it's not that complicated. What you wanna do is, for example, you wanna take the average value of a residential home in the community. Let's say that the average value of a home is thirty-five thousand or forty thousand dollars.
Let's go fifty thousand.
Let's go fifty thousand dollars. You divide that by a hundred, and you multiply it times point zero one, and that would be your tax rate for one cent. You wanna do it for two cents, point zero two. You wanna do it for three?
Do you have a calculator there?
I do.
Can you do a fifty thousand for two cents for the public, and no more, Liz?
Yes.
While we're talking in two-
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars. You see, we're talking about ten dollars and two cents, which was, would give us in the whole city, four thousand something dollars. When we're hitting potholes, and that, our tire costs ten dollars, you know. And if we start fixing potholes, even our city vehicles will get better use of it, our school buses will get more use of it, and our citizens will get more use of it. Two cents seems like, you know, sometimes we don't know the number, it seems like a big number, but it's not in value on the fifties, that means that a hundred thousand, it would be twenty dollars for a hundred thousand dollar home, which, you know, we're spending more fixing our vehicles than what we would increase. So I just wanted the public to know exactly what amount we're talking about.
And Mr. Vela, your recommendation, because right now, you know, we don't have a sense of the amount needed for the categories, we have an estimation, but not anything closer to being exact. How much time would you recommend that we take, from the time that we've had this meeting, had this discussion, to the time we take some action, so that we can assure that we can get the lowest rates that we've been looking at? With your experience, what kind of timeframe do you think we should be?
Interest rate movements is always a very volatile time. You know, sometimes- You know, sometimes we see them go up, sometimes we see them go down, we see events that impact us locally, you know, for whatever reason. I would say that it doesn't look like that interest rates are going to move up, but we're, we can't really forecast interest rates. So, with a, with the concept of an overabundance of caution, I would say to move as hastily as possible, but doing your due diligence in terms of being able to delineate your projects as the way you're doing it, and come up with your program, and we, we, we do the financing when you get through, because a lot of times, there's, makes no sense to rush through this process if it's not understood or misunderstood, even worse. And, and I think the, that the, the public support to do some of these things is very important.
And you did mention it was three point eighteen percent?
The current rates on the interest.
Oh, three point one eight.
Oh, three point, twenty, I'm sorry.
On a twenty-year bond. Now, in your cases, it's a little lower, because the structure that we have used to optimize on city, it's a lot shorter. Because we're utilizing existing debt, we're utilizing also combination, uh, contributions from your interest and sinking fund. So if we start going a little longer, uh, it works against you, quite frankly. So, in this particular case, it's, it's debt that's designed optimally for this program, you know, to make it work for you. Now, um, the slide that you saw is a bond buyer, it's a twenty-year bond. Twenty-year bonds of twenty selected GO bonds, uh, normally, they're double-A rated bonds, so... But at the end of the day, interest rates are down, and supply is not that, uh, forthcoming as well. So, whenever you go into the market, what's gonna make a difference is how much paper is out there versus the demand of the funds that need to buy the paper. It's, it's a simple supply and demand like any other economic, uh, situation.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Vela, appreciate you.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
All right, then, what I'm gonna do is, a council, I know I've asked, um, some folks wanted to speak, but they're, that, we don't have a public comment on the work session. Can I ask them to, they can speak in the public comments on the city, the city agenda? So, if anybody wanted to speak, you needed to sign up for the public comments in the actual city. All right, and we're limited those to three minutes a person. I'd like to go ahead and close the work session, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
This work session is adjourned at six twenty-two.